Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome you to this regularly scheduled city council meeting. The minutes from the, what was the date?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Yeah, let's see if we're here.
Don't forget me.
Okay.
Harold?
Yes.
Holland Ba?
Here.
Leontis?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Roland?
Zamfordino?
Here.
Okay. So, the minutes from the January 6th meeting have been distributed to everybody. Are there any additions or corrections? No? Okay, that being the case, is it a motion to adopt the minutes?
I move that we adopt the minutes.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Kay, could you call?
It's a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor say yay.
Yay.
All opposed say yay. Okay. Motion carries. Correspondents, Kay, what do we got?
Um, yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting is a listing of budget transfers from the Finance Director, Brian Bouchong, and those transfers require your approval.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve. So moved. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Awesome. Properly moved and seconded.
It's a voice vote.
Okay.
You can do a voice vote.
I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right.
And I also have one more item. From Mayor Ospaker is a request for confirmation of an appointment to the Board of Public Utilities of Brett Pogan for a term ending 5/31/23.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we approve the appointment of Brett Hogan to, Hogan to the Public Utilities Board.
All right. I guess I'll second that. We really notice Sandy when she's not here.
So I have a question about the appointments because I'm new to the council. When appointments like these are made, and maybe this was presented and I missed it, and I apologize, is some kind of resume or educational background of the person provided to us in case we don't know them, especially if we don't know them?
Yes, typically, before I make an appointment like this, I'll confer with staff, look for somebody with relevant experience in this area. In this particular instance, Mr. Pogan is a construction specialist at the university with also industrial experience in the private sector prior to joining the university capital planning staff. The thought is that he will match the experience of the exiting member in terms of general knowledge of construction practices in industrial, uh, construction as well, so that the practical experience will be beneficial. We have really, the primary consideration is we try to find somebody with relevant experience.
So I appreciate that. If in the future, some kind of a CV could be, or resume could be shared with us ahead of time, I'd appreciate that.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where were we?
Need to vote on it. Just a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, in that case, anything special tonight? Okay. Uh, let's do the introduction of new legislation.
Lobby?
Lobby?
Lobby visitation.
Oh.
We don't have any, someone signed up.
No one signed up?
Mm-hmm.
I knew that, that's why I didn't say it. All right. Introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
On behalf of the committee, the whole, I have a resolution honoring Richard A. Edwards for distinguished public service and designating him Mayor Emeritus of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. This document still needs to be signed by a couple of members, so I will withhold the official pen and the documents here and after the meeting, we can complete that.
All righty.
Also, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I have three ordinances. One, authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors to work, for work, that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2020. And an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Uh, Mr. President, I have-
Mr. Leontis.
I have two ordinances, uh, on behalf of the Public Utilities Committee. The first one is an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to accept a utility easement from David C. Mar. And the second is an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for lime sludge disposal services.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Phipps?
Uh, I have an ordinance from the Zoning, Planning, and Economic Development Committee, authorizing the city attorney to file a petition to annex approximately 40 acres of city-owned property at the southwest corner of Carter Road and East Pole Road to the City of Bowling Green and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I believe that's all the legislation, which brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to, first of all, extend my, um, thanks and appreciation to Public Works Department and all of the employees that worked so diligently over the weekend in response to the, uh, snow event. That was a tricky one, with the amount of very, very wet, heavy snow that, uh, that we got in a overnight, short period of time, and then the ensuing freeze created opportunity for some really difficult, uh, conditions on our streets. Public Works got in front of it, and also would thank our residents for cooperating in terms of getting their vehicles off the streets to allow our public works, um, folks room to do their work. It's really a critical, um, that they have the opportunity to do that. Um, I also wanted to just comment on some time I've spent, um, in the last several weeks. It was important to me, as I took office, to, uh, create opportunities to go out to every city, um, facility, across every shift, and introduce myself to all of our city employees, and, more importantly, take advantage of the opportunity to thank them for the work that they do, and to begin to understand just what it is they do on a daily basis, how they do it, and what they need to do their work. It's been very valuable time, and I've been just extremely impressed with the quality of people that we have working for the city. Their expertise in technical matters, um, their skill, and their commitment and dedication to the work that they do, um, has been really impressive to me, and I just wanted to share that, um, because I think that it's important that we take the time to do that. They work really hard. Oftentimes, we take for granted the work that they perform, and, uh, I just think it's really important that we, uh, at least for me anyways, it's important to really understand what it is they do and the challenges that they face. And I guess I would encourage all of you, given an opportunity, uh, to engage with any of the city employees through our department heads, if you have an opportunity to observe what it is that they do, you'll be astounded. All of the things that they do, that oftentimes, we just don't see, but it just gets done, and we, um, appreciate the fact that they're doing it. Um, that's all I have, um, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for the mayor?
Very good, thank you. Um, I did want to mention, with all due respect, I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting at this point in order to get out to the university and participate, um, in an event at halftime of the basketball game. We've been asked to, um, give a, present a proclamation to a very highly accomplished ex-Falcon basketball player, current NBA player, who is back in town this afternoon with his team, and he has been in town all day, has been conducting youth clinics at the, uh, at the arena this afternoon, and I'm happy to participate in a, in a halftime presentation honoring his achievements, so.
Would you like us to go with you?
You're welcome to join. Finish up here, and we'll make sure you get a seat. Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Uh, Ms. Tretter isn't here. Any questions for Ms. Tretter? Okay. Uh, Planning Director, say.
Good evening. Want to make sure we announce this publicly, that there will be a joint meeting of city council and the Planning Commission on Tuesday, February 11th at 6:00 PM. And please note, this will be at the meeting room at the Simpson Building. We want to make sure we have enough space to, you know, let alone fitting in our, the public, the Planning Commission and city council. Um, the purpose of that meeting is to have a presentation by Kelsey Zoning to share our draft gateway corridor, so that would be around the area of Thurston, Manville, and East Booster. They will also be reviewing the diagnostic table, which compares the zoning code to the seven principles of the land use plan to see how the code supports, or does not support, the principles of the land use plan. So I think that will be a great meeting for everybody to attend if you can make it. Also, on February 11th, same day, but from noon to 2:00 PM at the Wood County District Public Library, the public is invited to a public meeting regarding the 2045 transportation plan. It's the 2020 update from TMACOG. They are responsible for updating the Toledo Region's long-range transportation plan, very critical for funding infrastructure. Um, this, of course, prioritizes a list of projects, initiatives, and policies that will guide transportation, which includes Wood County, Lucas County, and Monroe County in southeast Michigan. Um, this update is required every five years. I will email you the draft documents that we have so far, and also a survey. So if you do have time, we want as many people as we can get there to obviously look at those projects and provide, uh, input. Um, also, we have, we want you to save the date. I know it's a little ways away, but the sixth annual Interfaith Breakfast is scheduled for Tuesday, April 21st, starting at 7:15, and, um, we know this is a really important event that, um, I think the community looks forward to. We will be looking for sponsorships to try to keep this breakfast free. We do have some costs coming this year for the breakfast, and we appreciate the support. I'm really excited that we'll be at the, I don't know if I can say, this is Kristen here, at the new building at City Park, so, really excited about that. So I appreciate it, unless you have any questions, that's it.
You went kind of fast.
Yes.
So February 11th?
Correct.
Is this zoning, uh, this is the consultants?
Correct, yes.
And what time will that be, and where will that be?
6:00 PM at Simpson, the Simpson Building, in the meeting room.
Okay, that's over on, uh, Winter Garden.
Correct. Well, Conny Out in Winter Garden, yes.
Yeah. And then the TMACOG meeting is going to be in Toledo, or?
No, that is right next door. They're going to travel with their public meetings all over the region. The one at the library next door will be February 11th from-
Okay, so our library.
Correct, yes. 12 to 2.
And that was in the afternoon, I guess?
Correct, 12 to 2.
12 to 2.
And I will email you the flyer, so you have that.
What day of the week is February 1?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So the same day as the consultant being here in town.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Park and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
All right, good evening. Uh, just a couple of quick things, uh, that are accompanied with flyers, so you don't have to take notes. Um, we have our, hard to believe, 14th Annual Brown Bag Music Series kicking off on January 31st. These are all on Fridays at the Simpson Building. It's a fantastic partnership with College of Musical Arts at BG SU. So we provide the space, and they bring the super important part of that, which is the talent and entertainment. So, um, covers all different, uh, genres, uh, kicking off with Vocal Arts Celebration on January 31st, February 14th, Afro-American Spiritual, and then there's, uh, we have chamber music, cello, opera, um, so I'll pass these down, and those are over the lunch hour, uh, so hence the brown bag. You don't actually have to bring a brown bag, you can bring your lunch and something else, um, if you would like, uh, but come and eat your lunch and, uh, stay warm, uh, and, uh, taking some great talent from, uh, our neighbors, BG SU. Um, before, I think, no, I will not be at the next council meeting because I'll be at a conference, so I'm sure that Wendy Chambers will be here telling you all about Winterfest, um, but Parks and Recreation is involved once again with Winterfest. We do have our, uh, annual Frostbite One Mile Fun Run. Um, we have a new twist on that, our programmers are very creative. Uh, with your entry fee, there is also a Frostbite Family Snowball Relay. Um, so this one-mile run is very family-friendly because most runs, those of you that do runs, you have your 5K, and then there's maybe a shorter distance that the kids do, but they do that separately. Um, so this is one mile, um, around City Park, so you won't get lost, um, and families can do it together. So it's really just a neat opportunity, also all you New Year's resolutions people that are coming out to the community center and getting in shape. Um, you have a couple more weeks, and it's only one mile, you can walk or you can run. Um, and then there's several, um, family activities, um, outside, of course, uh, that are going on, and it's all on the flyer. Slalom, obstacle course race, uh, Frosty Zucchini 500, which is a carrot bobsled edition, if you've ever seen the Zucchini 500 at the farmer's market. So anyway, they're just getting creative, um, because City Park is a little different for the, for the Frostbite this year, um, so check in, and, um, after post-race, we'll be inside the pool guardhouse, not inside the new building, um, but we're getting there, so I'll hand those out. Um, and other than that, uh, I was in the building today for a construction update meeting, and it's the first time that I saw the floor that was removed from that, um, south, the larger side, um, has been, um, repurposed, and it is on the wall in the entry lobby. It looks really, really cool. Um, so it's really neat to have that flooring that was in that building for so many years, and to have that, again, sort of a testament to the building that was there. Um, and I will share, we'll be getting a press release out, I mentioned this sort of prematurely about two years ago, and I have gotten a few photos, um, but in the lobby of the new building, we want to put up old photos, uh, from the park, um, hopefully featuring some of the buildings that weren't there, is what we're predominantly going to focus on. Um, there can be people in it, but of course, we want to see the aspects of the park. The other thing we'll also be working on is, uh, we were recently awarded, um, a couple grants from Wood County Park District, but the one, um, is some interpretive signage in City Park that will, uh, explain the history of the different parts of the park. Probably Needle Hall will have what the property used to be, um, I think there's four signs that we got funding for, so, thought that would be a really good time to sort of encapsulate all that out there, so. Um, but if you know of people that maybe have some photos, I know there's some people that have told me, oh, we got married at the Veterans Building, um, if they have, you know, photos that they'd be willing to share, um, we do want to kind of put some of that, uh, history in the lobby there, so. My report was longer than I intended, I apologize, but, um, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Ottley?
Thanks.
Next, we have City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Mr. Marsh, I have a couple of questions for you. Would you mind? Okay.
I know about music, it's AM and FM. Other than that, yeah.
Well, first I want to thank you for, uh, sending to, at least to the Community Development or Community Improvement Committee, and maybe to the full council, I'm not sure, uh, some legislation from Rosford.
Yeah, everybody.
Dealing with the-
Everybody got-
Everybody got that, okay, great. And, uh, I was wondering, uh, uh, there was a rumor that you had a hand in crafting that, is that true? I mean, I'm just curious.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, okay, so that's super. Now, some of the issues that you were raising last year with regard to Fourth Amendment, uh, constitutional issues, are those taken care, I read through the legislation, but I'm, I'm kind of new to this. Are those Fourth Amendment issues taken care of already, or will they have to be, will something provision have to be added? Because that was written in 2015.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, I don't know that anybody could tell you that until it happens.
Till it happens.
I guess. I don't know how to answer that.
Well, I had a conversation today with people at Kent, and they said if you, if we stick strictly to civic penalties, you know, for when compliance issues come up, and not use any criminal code, that we may be able to avoid some of those problems.
I think that is probably good advice. I think, uh, the voluntary, uh, or, I should say, self, self-inspection is big.
With the initial inspections, yeah.
Because, um, the ones that have been struck down involved, um, mandatory inspections.
From the get-go.
That's where the Fourth Amendment thing came in.
Right. Just to be clear, the-
I don't know that anybody can tell you what'll work for sure until it's tested-
Right, until we try it.
Somewhere, but-
Well, we'll kind of need to guide us on that.
The, um, the, the fees at Rosford are much more modest than what you see other places because, uh, I don't think it was in a, I don't think it was an attempt to either make money or hammer landlords, so it's, it's a pretty modest fee.
Or tenants, for that matter.
Uh, yeah. And so, I don't know, but, the reason I sent it around is because I thought it was the most reasonable example I have seen of something like what I understood all of you are interested in.
Right, we have been looking at the Amherst legislation, it was interesting to compare them.
I don't like the Amhersts.
Okay, well, maybe you could tell us a little bit about that?
Well, it provides for-
At the committee meeting, you have to-
Provides for criminal penalties.
Okay.
And it provides for, uh, basically, uh, a board to determine those criminal, I-
I remember that.
There are a lot of issues there that I think would-
They made it more complicated.
Not stand up.
Yeah.
Maybe it works in Massachusetts, I don't know, but, yeah.
Well, it's good to have something local, uh, that comes under our state laws.
Well, it hasn't been challenged, it's been in effect for four and a half years now, now. It's not the same kind of community, I know, but, um, not nearly as many rental units.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, and thank you for-
That is, okay.
All right. Next, we have Utilities Director, Brian O'Connell.
I just wanted to update you on, uh, uh, microfiltration expansion that's going on at the water plant. Um, so, we added, uh, two microfiltration trains at the plant, uh, they're within about the next three weeks of going into operation, and so the microfiltration units, we have two right now, they feed water to the RO units, or reverse osmosis units, we have two of those trains as well. Um, so by, so in total, we'll have four when this project is completed, and that's going to add some, uh, some reliability and some, um, some consistency operation-wise for getting water to the RO, this RO, uh, train. And, uh, right now, when we, when we have one of the microfiltration units down, there is a small supply of water that will keep the ROs running for a period of time, but, um, we have to shut the ROs down, and the, the microfiltration units have to go through more frequent cleanings, and so by having additional, uh, microfiltration units there to supply water to the RO, we'll get more consistent, uh, membrane treatment water out of that side of the plant versus the conventional side of the plant. So, it's, it's close to getting, uh, into, into, uh, production. Uh, the project is, is going pretty well. Customers probably won't see anything, they won't notice any difference in taste or quality that they're getting now, but, um, uh, but the plant operators will greatly appreciate having some additional equipment, uh, to use for that process. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, when I was over there, it was like two or three years ago, I think they told us that not all the water goes through the reverse osmosis, about half and half, is that right? Do you want to do a mixing at some point?
It's actually closer to probably, uh, 70/30. So 70% goes through conventional chemical treatment, and about 30% goes through the, the RO or the membrane treatment, and then that water is, is blended.
And will this allow us to pass more water through the RO? Will this increase that?
Uh, the capacity of the RO won't really change because the, the overall, um, the, the limit is really, if you have both ROs on, you can get three MGD out of that, and so, we have to be a little bit careful that we don't, uh, bring that ratio up too high because we need the, the, uh, hardness and the minerals in the conventional plant because those, those pass through the, the chemical, the conventional or the chemical lime softener treatment side of that, uh, process. Um, and the membrane or the reverse osmosis takes all of that out.
I see.
And so if your water's too pure, that's really not good for customers, and that's not good for our pipes. Um, and by blending the two, we get probably the best of both worlds, we get, we get to meet, uh, EPA disinfection by product rules, um, so our THM levels are, are below, uh, the EPA limits, um, but you also get the, um, all the minerals and things that have to be in that water to, to make it, uh, for human consumption, um, are there to provide for stability and pH balance and those kind of things, alkalinity. Um, so if we don't have that, if you have a strictly membrane plant, you have to put that back in through some kind of a calcium contactor, um, which we've talked about adding in the future, um, for, for additional reliability, um, and as, as the membranes grow, as, as that part of the plant grows, uh, we'll probably have to add those types of systems that we don't have today because we're blending that, that finished water, uh, product. And so, um, it, but, but that's about the ratio we have right now to answer your question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Public Works, Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Have any questions for Mr. Kraft? Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the reading of legislation. No, wait, council committee reports. All right. Uh, anyone have a council committee report?
Mr. President?
Mr. Zamfordino?
Uh, tonight, we had, uh, the first meeting of the Community Improvement Committee regarding, um, exploring the issue of, of rental licensing, registration, or inspection in town. Um, as you know, I'm real excited that this assignment has been, uh, given to the committee. Uh, I think we had a good first meeting. Um, tonight, we largely just introduced, uh, the task and some, uh, the deadlines we're working with, uh, and as you know, we set up two, uh, meetings for, uh, February to further the, the discussion, uh, and both of those meetings will be, um, devoted to, uh, public input, the two February meetings. Uh, and, uh, it's conceivable we may schedule more meetings in February, but at this point, we have the, the two set up.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
Uh, first, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I had originally scheduled a meeting for February 3rd, which I am hereby canceling. Uh, the focus of that meeting was primarily going to be to, um, get council to start looking forward at, at the next 11-year period and the next 27th pay issue that's coming up down the road and try to get a commitment from council. I've since learned that the administration will be looking at that over the course of this year, and I think it's prudent at this time just to let that process happen, and if it's, I still feel it's an issue at the end of the year, we can, we can bring it up. So I'll cancel that, that meeting in February as not being necessary. The other meeting I anticipated in, in the end of the first quarter, I will maintain on the calendar.
March 16th.
Yeah, that one will stay.
March 16th.
March 16th, yeah, that one, that'll remain. Also, um, in an effort, I wish you'd bear with me here, I, I need a few minutes here, but because we've, pass these down. Sure. Everybody's got, there's a copy here, including for Kay, and one for everybody. Uh, we got a new year here, we've got, uh, some new members, we've got some old issues, and, and I think if all of you are aware, for the last nearly two years, I've been trying to keep an update on all of the, the CAP and planning, zoning, and economic development issues that have been going on. I think this is a good time, uh, to reintroduce where we were, where we're going, and sort of close the book. We're getting, I'm transitioning, of course, to, we got a new chair of the, the Planning Committee, and, uh, I'd like to take a few minutes and, and walk through a few documents and bring everybody up to speed, and I think this will be helpful in, in, as a reminder and as, uh, and for the new members as well, and I also have a couple of copies. Kirsty. Sometimes you can't hear me, but I got your page. In any case, all right, so what, what we have in this packet, um, the first document is simply a copy of the original 10 priorities that we established as a council back in April of 2018, or, or March, whatever the date was, this document. And, and this is just simply as a historical document, especially to, it's either to remind a historical document, especially it's either to remind those who didn't have theirs or for our new members. And it just focuses on those 10 that we've been working on for the last year and a half or so. Just a historical document. The next document, we'll walk through real briefly where we're at with the CAP implementation of those 10 priorities, and I'll talk real briefly about where we are, or at least I believe we are, with the East Worcester Street strategic development update and then other issues. Starting with the CAP, there are a number of issues that we've completed, implementation recommendations, we've implemented them, and they're on here. They involve our council priorities 1 and 3, 6 and 8. I'm not going to read through them, the document's there for you. But any future updates that at least I prepare, we're not going to address. These are done, and we'll drop them from the tracking list. One, we found that we needed a table indefinitely. That was our priority 9B, which goes back to the CAP priority 2J, and that's been addressed. It has to do with plans that BG SU has for certain properties, and Lori's talked to them. They don't have plans for that, and if it becomes an issue down the road, we certainly can raise it again, but this is going nowhere. It was really more of a question, and I think that should drop off the list as well. The next category you'll see is implementation started but not completed. We're making some progress here. We combined, over the course of the last year and a half, our own internal priorities, 4 and 7, and the first part of that deals with the implementation of the Bicycle Commission's recommendation. This has been ongoing as well, the previous committee led by John, and that committee still has it. So, in the future, as of this moment, any update on this particular issue, I think, would be best come from the Transportation and Safety Committee. They've been working on the issue since, what, about a year now, John, when we started that a year ago. So, the point is, that's where it's resident, and I think that's where it should stay. And I'll let them address that. I know they've already talked about doing that. The second part of that implementation priority deals with a discussion, a long-going discussion about a Bowling Green Community Center and finding a way to trail there. I'd like to defer that over to Parks and Recreation Committee because it's a park issue. And, you know, further discussion on how we get to that end result still needs to be determined how and when, and I suspect that issue will come up again in our strategic planning meeting as well. So, those will be off this overall list. Another positive here, we've talked about before, but two of our priorities, internal priorities 1 and 9A, will be incorporated into a zoning code review when that happens, we get that all finalized. So, those implementation priorities will be, will happen, they'll be implemented in the course of doing the update. Pending, the TIF, an explanation on how TIF can help us. Lori's been working on that. We all realize that we didn't have the expertise here within the city, and she's managed to contact Montrose Economic Development, and they're still negotiating a date. I don't think we've set on a date yet. Do you know, Joe? So, when she last brought that up, she tossed out a few dates, but we were working around schedules, especially Sandy's, and so she wanted to make sure all seven members were present, so she was still negotiating a date. So, that will happen. That's still ahead of us. And then, priority 10, and again, these weren't in any order. This deals with the rental property issue that the discussion began tonight with the Community Improvement Committee. So, this issue too, I think, is best updated in the future by the Community Improvement Committee and not by me representing, you know, as a member of the Planning Committee. So, that one, we'll hear updates on that from the Community Improvement Committee. So, I think that's important to wrap that up on this list. Just as a brief review, of course, the East Worcester Street Strategy for redevelopment. You know, a lot of issues were raised in that. We, as a council, jumped in and focused on one that we thought we'd get the most bang for our buck out of and be able to move, and that's the Gateway Zoning District. And of course, we're going to hear about that on February 11th, so that's moving forward. There were other elements that I don't think we really got a good handle on. Some of them involve both the university and the hospital, and some of them may not even involve the city directly. What I would suggest, and we can talk about this, Mr. President, moving forward, but I would suggest, down the road, later in the year, maybe June or July, perhaps, a meeting of the committee, the whole, might be appropriate to readdress where we're at and where we think we ought to be heading on the items brought up in that East Worcester Street strategy. I don't think we have enough information right now, and we probably want to give the city some time to look at them. But unfortunately for us as a city, a lot of these are in the hands of the university and/or the hospital. And other than the Gateway District, which we are making gains on and moving forward on, I don't know where we're at. So, anyway, that's my suggestion, is to readdress those issues later in the year and see if we need to reprioritize our efforts as a council and as a city. Other issues that I think are important and related to planning, zoning, and economic development, this is great news. Of course, we just heard that zoning diagnostic report that we commissioned last year will be presented to us on February 11th. That's great news. That will inform us greatly as we, you know, figure out how to move forward with the overall zoning code review. And then, we also know that we approved that zoning code review in the budget, for the 2020 budget, and very significantly, our initial priorities, numbered 1 and 2, 9A, will be rolled into that, as well as 16 additional CAP priorities that are rolled into that. So, as we move forward and that project happens, we will have not only completed three of our original 10 priorities, but 16 additional CAP priorities will be addressed in that overall zoning code review. So, there'll be tremendous movement on working through implementation of a great number of the priorities in that CAP document. So, and then, just as, again, a matter of record, this is a document I produced before. Just, I used a hand-annotated version of the priority list from the CAP document just to show in yellow which ones were our original 10, which ones will be rolled into or could be rolled into the zoning code update, or will, are rolled in, and then the two items that get rolled into the Gateway Zoning Project as well. And it just shows you that when you, at a quick snapshot with a color code, we have made and will continue to make great progress on moving forward on these citizen-developed priorities. So, that is my report as now a member of the Planning Committee, and I think it'll be much shorter in the future until we start, you know, adding more information to it. So, thank you for giving me the time to do that, Mr. President.
Anything else?
Mr. President, could I ask him a question?
Feel free.
Okay. First of all, I really appreciate what you've done here to help those of us who are new get up to speed and provide an historical background. I do have some questions on the color coding. Real quickly, tell us what the color coding means.
Yeah. All I did was highlight in yellow those items that, checkmark, these are the ones that were the council's original 10 that we've been working off for the last year and a half. Those are over here in the yellow. Blue are those items that are zoning code-related and will be or have been rolled, well, they've been rolled into the RFQ, but they will be rolled into the project update, the zoning code. So, there are going to be 16 enumerated items that are related to zoning.
I see.
That can, should and can be rolled into that overall review. And then, I just as a matter of information, highlighted the two items in pink that are...
Yeah, over here.
That happened to be part of the Gateway Project. That's overlap, and that just shows you there's overlap with the Worcester Street corridor project. It's a specific goal in that document, and it also is addressed here in two items. Again, it's...
And the screen color was at the original document?
Yeah, that's...
What does that mean?
You'd have to ask the authors. I'm just a user of the document.
Were those the ones that were low-cost?
They might be. They're higher-cost, actually.
Okay.
All right. To conclude, meeting reports, I would like to say that as far as the strategic planning session, I'd like to do that as soon as everybody is available for it, hopefully in early February, although meeting time slots seem to be filling up, so have to see what's available. Now, Kay, would you kindly lead us in the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading, resolution number 3754 for first reading, resolution honoring Richard A. Edwards for distinguished public service and designating him Mayor Emeritus of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I move that we suspend the rules and give resolution 3754 its second and third readings.
Second. All right. Resolution number 3754 has been properly moved and seconded. Kay, please call the roll.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion carried. The rules are suspended for resolution 3754.
Resolution number 3754 for second and third reading, resolution honoring Richard A. Edwards for distinguished public service and designating him Mayor Emeritus of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I enthusiastically move that we adopt resolution 3754.
Second. Resolution 3754 has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think we can all agree that it's a worthwhile effort to honor someone who faithfully represented the City of Bowling Green for eight years.
And Rachel and John don't leave without signing.
Thanks.
Okay, so, resolution 3754 has been properly moved and seconded. Kay, could you call the roll?
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes. All right, the motion is carried. Resolution 3754 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8819 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8820 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2020. Ordinance number 8821 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 8822 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for lime sledge disposal services. Ordinance number 8823 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to accept a utility easement from David C. Maurer. Ordinance number 8824 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the city attorney to file a petition to annex approximately 40 acres of city-owned property at the southwest corner of Carter Road and East Poe Road to the City of Bowling Green and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Ms. Phipps?
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8824 its second and third reading.
Second. Okay. Ordinance 8824 has been properly moved and seconded. Kay, could you call the roll?
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
Okay, never mind, I withdraw.
I was just going to say, motion carried, the rules are suspended.
Ordinance number 8824 for second and third reading, ordinance authorizing the city attorney to file a petition to annex approximately 40 acres of city-owned property at the southwest corner of Carter Road and East Poe Road to the City of Bowling Green and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Phipps?
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8824.
Okay. Second. All right. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8824. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, Kay, could you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to adopt.
Wait, you'd say like...
Oh, motion passed.
That was the motion to adopt, was it?
It was a motion for the emergency clause.
Mr. President?
Ms. Phipps?
I move to adopt ordinance 8824.
Second.
Thank you. All right. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 8824. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Kay, could you call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Ordinance 8824 is adopted.
Legislation for second reading, ordinance number 8817 for second reading, ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, again, I'm new, and I don't know how this goes on, but I do have some discussion items regarding this particular ordinance that I'd like to raise at this time, if it's the appropriate time.
This is just receiving a second reading.
That's correct.
Okay.
But I think...
Generally, discussion would occur during third reading.
Okay. Well, I'll just say that I've passed out some questions that I had regarding this ordinance. I've addressed those to the administration, to Lori Treter, and gotten some response, but not, everything's not been answered. And I also did a little investigation on my own about how the airport operates and what its budget is for the past year, and you'll see that budget on the backside of your sheet. And so, I'd like, I guess this would be then a discussion we could have at the third reading. And I'm not trying to gum up the works with, at this point, but it might be that we might ask the Finance Committee this year to look at these questions for next year's appropriation.
Okay, that sounds excellent. All right.
Ordinance number 8818 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting section 91.18B of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding indigent burials and amending and adopting section 35.70 regarding city fees. And there is no legislation for third reading, and ordinance number 8813 comes off the table automatically.
So, Mr. President?
Ms. Phipps?
I move to adopt ordinance 8813.
Second. Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 8813. Is there any discussion on indigent burials?
Not indigent.
Oh, it's not?
Which one are we doing?
Zoning code.
Oh, the zoning code update, okay.
This is the public hearing that occurred this evening in which there were no comments from the public.
Right. Okay. So, Kay, could you call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 8813 is adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I move that we excuse Sandy Rowland from tonight's meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
No, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor of excusing Councilperson Rowland, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Councilperson Rowland is excused. Is there any other business to come before City Council? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned.